Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and it is a little after six this evening, Tuesday, October the 17th, and I will call our meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none on paper, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss administrative appointments, appointments, information only, dismissal, resignations, substitutes, and goals of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A2.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded and moved into closed sessions for the reasons that the vice chair mentioned. Any discussion? All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're in closed session until approximately 7:00 PM.
I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded that the board reconvene from closed session. All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are back in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to certify our closed session. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
We have two motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? Seeing none on paper, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, and E from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, and E from compulsory attendance for religious reasons. Any discussion? Seeing none on paper, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is the moment of silence, and hope that you'll join me this evening in a moment of silence, and we'd like to do that in memory of a bus driver that we recently lost, Sandy Singleton-Salyers. Thankful for her service and want to continue to pray for her family during this difficult time. So please join me in a moment of silence in Sandy's memory. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have a consent agenda. We've got the consent agenda before us. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is the portion of our evening for student and staff recognition. Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is going to be recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, we will give you an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with Mr. Monk and myself for a photograph, then move to the right and remain in the front, and we'll take a photo of the entire group being recognized. And thanks, everyone, for coming out this evening. So, Mr. Chair and myself will head on down.
The following students from Dow J. Howard Center competed in the Skills USA competition at the Virginia State Fair. Ethan Britton and Carson Southern were a second-place team for the automotive service technology category. If you all could please come forward.
please come forward.
Sharice Woodward, business teacher at Sharando High School, was named the Walter L. Shell Business Teacher of the Year at the 2023 Virginia Business Education Association Meeting in Williamsburg this July. Sharice, if you could please come forward. Frederick County Public Schools is proud to announce that Mary Ann Showalter, bookkeeper at Gainesboro Elementary School, has been nominated for the RISE Award. The award is in conjunction with Virginia Department of Education and the United States Department of Education, and honored school staff and support roles, including paraprofessional, clerical, administrative services, transportation services, food and nutrition services, custodial and maintenance services, security services, health and student services, technical service, and skilled trade. We have a video that we'd like for you to view at this time.
In December of 2020, I was seeking a new bookkeeper, and Mary Ann walked into the interview room, and there was just this positivity that radiated from her.
There's a lot of wonderful things to say about Mary Ann. She makes a positive impact with our students and staff in so many ways. She's a joy to have here at Gainesboro.
Well, anyone who's going through the challenges that I've been going through, the biggest thing that I find that helps me is surrounding myself with people that I love and being around doing the things that I love to do. Being here gives me that strength.
Mary Ann has many positive impacts of the students and staff here at Gainesboro. One thing that she does is works tirelessly to boost the morale of the staff, especially after some challenging years in education. She has her own snack bar in the office. It's called Mary Ann's Happy Snack Market. There's a child who attends a speech session each day, and the child walks by and taps on Mary Ann's window and makes a few faces at her, but also shows her all of her rewards from her session.
She's just amazing. You could ask anyone, actually. They would tell you what an amazing human being she is.
Ten, twelve years ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer, and I went into remission, and five years later, it reoccurred, and I had to go through treatments again, and unfortunately, for the third time, it came back last year.
Originally, she didn't tell the staff. She wanted to get started in that journey first, but then, as her hair started to fall out, she was like, okay, I think it's time. Everyone rallied around her. She wore cute hats, you know, and we just made the best of it.
Treatments have been working so far, and the reason I feel like, and I know that they're working, is because I have the support of my wonderful family and my wonderful coworkers here, and those hugs that I get with no words. You don't need words. The hug is just the word itself. It means the world to me.
Well, on behalf of the board, Ms. Showalter, want to thank you for your service over the past couple of years during some especially difficult times, and thank you for sticking with us and allowing us to stick with you. Also want to congratulate, Ms. Woodward, I know Sharice, so, on an exceptional recognition for work that I know has been happening for years. So congratulations on being recognized for the work that occurs inside of our school every single year, and so thank you for that. As well as our students. And as someone who has worked closely with Skills USA before, excited to see the workplace readiness skills that you all are taking. Not only you're going to advance in the future, but that you're taking head-on right now, and so appreciate you all being champions at work. Mr. Lake, I heard him mention over there that he's ready to go. If you've got any vehicles that need some servicing over there, he's prepared for that and meeting high-demand, high-skilled jobs in our community or wherever you decide to go moving forward. And so thankful for the work that you all do, for the instructors that are, you know, taking that on. I know sometimes it's a little bit different than textbook work, right? You've got some hands-on application there that's working in all of our programs, and sometimes that isn't just by the book. There's a lot of ad-libbing that goes on and appreciative of the time and the extra attention that it takes for that. Other board members' comments? All right, wonderful. So we're thankful for you. Congratulations and a job well done, and thank you for representing Frederick County Public Schools so well. Appreciative of that. All right, Dr. Hummer, we'll move on next to admin assignments and then...
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to please call up Mrs. Delia Underwood. Please join me in welcoming her as our new Assistant Director of IT. She has been with FCPS for 23 years and most recently as a network engineer. Ms. Underwood has a Bachelor of Science in Information Technology, networking security from Western Governors University, and an undergraduate certificate in cybersecurity from Rehford University. Thank you very much and welcome back.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hummer, Dr. Angelo, Mr. Goodwin, and all of the people of Frederick County. It's my pleasure to have walked and continued to walk the halls and climb the stairs at Briarly Elementary. This was my cafeteria when I attended Klein. I walked through the halls of Frederick County Middle and heard Mr. Dick make announcements, and I graduated from the football field at James Wood High. I had started, came again, as my children entered this school system, and I started as a volunteer in the school system and became a staff member, and eventually ended up in my fifth-grade classroom here at Klein as a member of the IT team. And I appreciate all the time that all the teachers and administrators and all the staff throughout all those years led me, helped me to understand that I was to be a leader, and I appreciate all the time and energy that they put forth. I did not believe that I would ever make this position, and I appreciate everyone believing in me that I could. And I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to help shape the future and for giving me a chance. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're excited to have you in this new capacity and look forward to shaping the future together here at Frederick County Public Schools, so...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have one more announcement I'd like to make. I wanted to introduce our new clerk of the board as well.
Absolutely, yes.
If I can please call up Nina DeSantis. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Nina DeSantis as the new clerk of the board. She brings four years, we'll give her a round of applause. She brings four years of paralegal and deputy county clerk experience to the role of clerk of the board. Ms. DeSantis holds an associate's degree in administration of justice and paralegal studies from Northern Virginia Community College. She's bilingual in English and in German. Our goal is for her to officially be voted in as clerk in December, to get sworn in downtown, and then take on her first meetings in January. So very excited for you to be here, Nina.
Thank you.
Looking forward to welcoming you up on the dais in meetings to come. With that, as part of our consent agenda a little bit earlier, the board approved proclamations of three sorts. One around American Education Week, which is November the 13th through the 17th. One around National Education Support Professionals Day, November the 15th, and one around Substitute Appreciation Day, which we will be celebrating in a new way in Frederick County on November the 17th. And so want to thank all the folks within our education system, especially our support professionals, as well as our substitutes for the work that they do each day, to make sure our schools are highly functioning, our students are learning, and every once in a while, our teachers can maybe take a day off or a sick day related to those substitutes. So thank you, excited to celebrate you as we move into November. With that, we've reached the portion of our meeting where if you have other obligations this evening and came for recognition, you're welcome to leave. Want to congratulate you again and thank you for being here. Next portion of our agenda is the citizen and staff comments. The clerk shared that no one had signed up. Is there anyone that would like to comment this evening? All right. Next, we have reports. Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items that I wanted to mention, and then I have a little mini presentation for you all about our annual report that I'll be reporting out to you all. So first and foremost is thanks to Chairman Monk for commemorating the moment of silence for the loss of one of our amazing bus drivers. Sandy passed away earlier this year, and she is going to be truly, truly missed. She'd been with FCPS as a bus driver since 2019. She served Jordan Springs, James Wood High, Stonewall, and she left behind a major, major gap in those communities. We continue to send our thoughts and prayers to the family, staff, and the community. So thanks again, Mr. Monk, for that, Mr. Chair. October is a busy month. First, we have, it is Disability Awareness Month, and I want to take this time to thank our staff, parents, and community stakeholders for supporting our students and adults with disabilities. We are all unique in our own way, and we have a lot to contribute, especially to this amazing community. I also want to thank our students, parents, staff, and vendors for putting on another fantastic I'm Determined event at Ailer Middle School earlier this month. We had great sessions for our parents and students, and we also had community support and vendors who provided a wealth of information and support to our parents and students. I'm Determined is a way for students to take ownership of their education, help them become bigger advocates for themselves in order for them to be successful in all settings. Thanks again to everyone to make this event successful and supportive for our students and our families. I also wanted to highlight an awesome event that we were a part of for a group of fifth-grade students at Greenwood Mill, which there was also an article in the paper. I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at that, but we had a group of third-grade students that started a project two years ago to add two pieces of inclusive equipment to their playground, and they took this all on their own. This was their idea. They worked very hard on this, and I just continue to be amazed and so proud of all of our students and the great work that they do. On October 26th, there's going to be a new group of third-grade students that are going to take on a new project, and I will be there to ask them questions, help them figure out what their next project's going to be, and we're looking forward to what that is, what they're going to be able to accomplish, and I will keep you posted along the way. So very excited about that. October is also Bullying Prevention Month. We are always, always super vigilant and proactive when it comes to incorporating bullying prevention measures, but I wanted to take this time to highlight some events that are happening in our schools during the month of October. Armel has a Blue Out Bullying and Orange You Tired of Bullying, see that play on words there? I thought that was pretty cool, where they will have numerous information sessions on how parents and students can help prevent bullying. Evendale is also doing a Sharing Caring Forest, which emphasizes the importance of kindness and strengthening relationships. Lastly, Sharando is also encouraging staff and students to wear orange tomorrow as they continue to emphasize the importance of showing kindness and acceptance for all. I also was honored to be part of the Sharando Parade, which I thought was a great aspect of this amazing community, which I didn't know happened, and it was a phenomenal experience. It was great to see our students, our staff, our stakeholders, some of you, come together to celebrate this amazing county. So I'm looking forward to be part of that for many, many years to come. Lastly, some, another tradition that I wanted to highlight is I want to congratulate all of our student-athlete Hall of Famers. So if you're not aware, each high school honors a Hall of Fame class every year and recognizes them at a home football game, and then an induction ceremony happens over that respective weekend. We have outstanding athletes, coaches, and contributors over the years, and what a way to honor and recognize them. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Any questions for Dr. Hummer related to his report? All right, next, I think we're going to hear from Dr. Hummer again around the report, annual report. So we'll give him a few minutes to get that up. Thank you, Dr. Hummer.
All right, hello again. All right, so I wanted to take this time to go over our annual report, which is done every year, and this is part of a bigger project that every school division has to do, and they have to submit a series of information, including audit reports, financial statements, as well as other things that we have completed throughout the course of the year that gets submitted to the VDOE. And this is a highlight of those items, as well as additional things that have occurred over the course of the year. This annual report is published on our website, so everybody can now access that, and this is just a kickoff of that. So I wanted to provide you with some basic information and then, of course, open up for any questions. First is the highlight of creating pathways and avenues for our students. That is something that all of us, all of our staff, all of our administrators are extra passionate about, of making sure that we are creating these pathways that are appropriate for each and every student. So there was a story that was highlighted based on a parent that we had interviewed this year who had triplets, and each of those boys graduated last year, and they each had their own pathway. One of them had a disability, the other one was typical developing, and they each were able to be successful and graduate at the same graduation. So please take your time to read through this and really highlight the great work that we do as a school division to really focus on those individual needs of our students, because all 14,000 of our students have unique needs, and we have the amazing staff to work with each of those students to meet those needs. Wanted to highlight some numbers for all of you, and I know some of us always get a kick out of some of these numbers, because it's hard to fathom, that we serve over 1 million lunches every year. The other one is we've traveled over 2.4 million miles every year on our buses, and to put that into perspective, from here to San Francisco is a little less than 3,000 miles. So do the math on how many back-and-forth times our buses have traveled with students on them. So thank you to our bus drivers and all the hard work that they do. We also have over 2 million square foot of building space. That's a lot of work in regards to keeping up with all of our building spaces, keeping up with all the maintenance and all of our assets. So there's a lot of work that goes into that. So we appreciate all of our maintenance workers and all of our custodians that keep up with all of that ground. We also have a lot of staff that works tirelessly and unwaveringly to make sure that our students are able to meet those goals, as I talked about earlier, and we continue to assess the need for additional staff as we continue to grow, but in regards to looking at all the staff that meet those needs, as well as all of the individualized needs. We have students who are homeless, we have students that require specialized education and services, and we also make sure that we are meeting our families where they are, and we make numerous home visits throughout the course of the year as well. Another key celebratory piece is we've had over 90% of our students in our Project Search Program who are employed in our community, which again is another great feat that we should all be very proud of and appreciative of. Our greatest asset is our people. It's all of us, it's all of you, it's all of our teachers, it's all of our custodians, it's all of our administrative assistants. They keep our school division running smoothly, and they're the ones that are in the trenches that we want to continuously support. And without those staff, we're not able to meet our goals, and we want to make sure that we are continuously recognizing them for all of the great work that they're doing as we continue to move forward and meet the needs of this amazing, of the amazing students in this school division. So with that, next steps, as you all know, we have an October 27th board retreat next week where we're going to start to embark on FY25, as crazy as that sounds, and we're going to be taking a look at a lot of data. We're going to be taking a look at where we currently are in regards to student performance, in regards to where we at with current capacities, and we're going to be taking a look at what are some of the things that we can do to improve on some of those areas and making sure that we are continuously responding to that growth of our population, of our students, and providing the supports that all of our students need and all of our staff need to meet the needs of those students. So with that being said, just wanted to provide you with some highlights of that report and would like to open up to any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Questions for Dr. Hummer from the board?
But in regards to looking at all the staff that meet those needs, as well as all of the individualized needs, we have students who are homeless, we have students that require specialized education and services, and we also make sure that we are meeting our families where they are, and we make numerous home visits throughout the course of the year as well. Another key celebratory piece is we've had over 90% of our students in our Project Search Program who are employed in our community, which, again, is another great feat that we should all be very proud of and appreciative of. Our greatest asset is our people. It's all of us, it's all of you, it's all of our teachers, it's all of our custodians, it's all of our administrative assistants. They keep our school division running smoothly, and they're the ones that are in the trenches that we want to continuously support. And without those staff, we're not able to meet our goals, and we want to make sure that we are continuously recognizing them for all of the great work that they're doing as we continue to move forward and meet the needs of this amazing, of the amazing students in this school division. So with that, next steps, as you all know, we have an October 27th Board Retreat next week, where we're going to start to embark on FY25, as crazy as that sounds, and we're going to be taking a look at a lot of data. We're going to be taking a look at where we currently are in regards to student performance, in regards to where we at with current capacities, and we're going to be taking a look at what are some of the things that we can do to improve on some of those areas and making sure that we are continuously responding to that growth of our, of our population, of our students, and providing the supports that all of our students need and all of our staff need to meet the needs of those students. So with that being said, just wanted to provide you with some highlights of that report and would like to open up to any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. Questions for Dr. Hammer from the board? Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Chairman, I just did some quick numbers on that, those bus trips. That's 10 trips to the moon and back. That's, that's a lot of miles we're putting on our bus and, you know, looking for those responsible bus drivers to, to take charge and, and, you know, take care of those students out there. So, you know, this is my plug to, you know, come be a bus driver. But in all seriousness, it is, you know, somewhere where we see a need, and we're looking forward to the community stepping up and coming in and joining the team. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I'm impressed with your math abilities there. Other, other questions for Dr. Hammer or comments related to the annual report? No, I appreciate that you bring it for the board. Excited to dig into the full report a little bit further, and I think this is really a tool, as you shared, outside academics, obviously, is the priority, right? Our students are priority there, but in order to make those things happen every day, it takes people. I've always said education is a people business, and it also takes some of the infrastructure. And so thankful for the report that highlights that and, and the work that our folks do, not just a test score, but everything that goes into that. So thank you, Dr. Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, that brings us to new business. First on our agenda is our Freedom of Information Act Officer Designation, or FOIA Officer Designation. We have a recommendation before us to appoint Dr. Hammer, sorry, I'm struggling here to read your memo there. Did you share the update?
So it's Mrs. Halkowski as the FOIA Officer with Dr. Angelo, Mr. Goodwin as the backup person.
Understood. Okay. So if you're in Board Docs, you might see that it's related to clerk, but that would be for the FOIA Officer position. So it would be Ms. Tara Halkowski for the FOIA Officer, and then the backups to those would be Mr. Goodwin and Dr. Angelo.
A motion for Ms. Tara Helo- Halkowski to assume the position of FOIA Officer and for Mr. Shane Goodwin and Dr. Jim Angelo to be alternates.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in second that's before us to have Ms. Halkowski to serve as our FOIA Officer, and Mr. Goodwin and Dr. Angelo to serve as the alternates. Any discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next, we have some committee reports. The first up is the Instruction Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. White.
A meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held September 21st, 2023. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM, and a copy of the meeting minutes have been provided to each board member. During this meeting, Ms. Eschevera shared information about the FCPS Career and Technical Education Program. Information was shared about CTE enrollments. She also provided additional information about CTE request and being able to fulfill those requests. Personalized learning journeys for various students were also shared. She shared information about the FCPS CTE partnerships and funding sources. Ms. Escheveria provided information about the CTE programs for components and credentials earned by students. Ms. Post reviewed information about the Work-Based Learning Program. She shared information about career awareness, exploration, and preparation. She stated that over 1,000 students participated in the Work-Based Learning Program at the middle school and high school levels. Additional information was shared about the growth potential for the Work-Based Learning Program. Ms. French discussed information about the CTE pathways and CTE at the middle school level. She discussed the programs of study and coordinated council for career and technical student organizations and opportunities for growth. Keller Cooley shared information about his CTE journey and the FFA. Mr. Thompson shared information about the programs at Dal J Howard Center and supporting all students. Ms. Johnston shared information about the alternation, alternative education programming at Dal J Howard Center. Those programs are long-term suspension programming, links, alternative learning paths for students, also known as ALPS, middle school alternative, alternative program, also known as MAP, and the Individual Student Alternative Education Program. I, I guess, IS, it's just the acronym, ISAEP. Information about enrollment was also provided. Ersan Menendez-Carranza discussed his enrollment in the ALPS program. Dr. Williams Sandy shared information about the special education processes and I'm Determined Self-Determination in the Child Fine Program. Jaylen Blackwell shared information about his partition, participation as a Special Education Advisory Committee Student Representative. The meeting adjourned at 6:24 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the meeting minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions about the information? All right, and I believe this was just an informational session, but it's been one of the best committee meetings, and I, not the best board meeting, but the students that were there and presented the testimony of their experience was so powerful, and it just goes to show us that these alternative programs are very much needed in our testament for the division as a whole in educating all students. And I think sometimes our learning center at Dal J Howard gets, you know, a bad spin on it, and there's some negative context, but these students that spoke were just so much benefited from it, and I think it goes to show you that there's, there's no bad student, right? It's just bad behavior, and sometimes they need a different environment to thrive. So I was so proud to present these meeting minutes and just extra proud to be a part of the Instruction Committee, and I hope you guys will go back and look at the video, because it was really powerful, so.
I'm going to follow up with that. Please go back and watch the video of that instruction meeting. It's well worth the time. I, I'm going to piggyback off what she said. It was the best instructional meeting. Not saying that they're all bad or anything, but that, that one was phenomenal, hearing those, those students get up and talk about their journey, but just then have them show their pride of their success, of where they once were to where they are now. I literally got out of that meeting and sat in my car for like 10 minutes just thinking about what we had just witnessed with those, with those students, and I've been telling everybody that I can to please go back and watch that instructional meeting. So, thank you.
And then to kind of further comment on that, it, like Mr. Hester and Ms. White said, please go back and watch. I, I see those YouTube, those counts on how many people viewed it. That one, that was kind of a tearjerker. But, you know, seeing these students take charge and, you know, be responsible for their education with, and, you know, the guidance that the, the alternative programs provide and, and the support from Dal J, I can't speak enough about it. You know, there's students out there who don't learn from typical learning environment, and they need those extra resources, and they need that, that extra attention. You know, it, it really breaks my heart to hear some students say, I, I don't like school, you know? But this gives an alternate learning path where these students can go and, you know, be valued and, and actually have a chance to go and, and take charge of their education. I know Mr. Blackwell came up, and he was talking about the progress he's made, you know, not only through school but within the community. You know, he's moved up from, you know, working at Subway, now he's the assistant manager over at the pizza place, and he's, I mean, it, that's one of those life lessons that, you know, you can either learn it one way or you can learn it the other, and these students have actually had that opportunity, and, you know, hats off to the, to the teachers and the administrators who've helped them along the way, you know? They've taken that special interest, you know? It's something that you don't get everywhere, you know? It's, it's that hometown community pride, and, you know, I'm thankful to be a part of this community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Had the opportunity to attend that meeting, and I'll echo those comments. Excuse me, I also share that when I was a CT teacher, I think a lot of folks were shocked to realize that I had a valedictorian and salutatorian in my class, and I also had some students that maybe were the opposite of that, right? And maybe weren't as successful that we might consider academically, and so I think it's important for all of us as parents and in the community, our, our current technical education programs are designed to take students from the classroom to the workplace, and that's a student that is achieving what we might consider high academically or a student that really needs some more hands-on application or a different perspective on education. And when we look at the total number of students that our CTE programs impact based upon our total enrollment, that's pretty high. So the likelihood that your child, son or daughter, is in a CTE program is pretty high, and maybe they're completers in that program, but it's really around that career exploration, them identifying maybe what they want to do, or maybe what they, they don't want to do after taking a class on it, and then getting them to the place where they're successful, whatever their definition of that success is. And so I really appreciated the, the meeting, sharing different viewpoints, especially from that student place of maybe why they chose to enter into a CTE program and its impact on them, as well as the impact that our administrators and our teachers are making. I'd say that the connection between our CT teachers, not to put down any other, our teachers, our, our connection is strong between all of our teachers, but a CTE teacher and that student is really just something special that helps to propel that student's educational experience, and that was showcased in the meeting. So, don't want to blabber anymore, but thoroughly enjoyed it, so. Mrs. White?
Yeah, there were no recommended actions. It was just information, but I do recommend the full board approve the minutes of the Instruction Committee meeting held on September 21st.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes of the Instruction Committee meeting held on September the 21st. Any discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. White. Next, we have the Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on September 12th. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Goodwin reviewed the capital projects list. Mr. Matthew Cropper of Cropper GIS reviewed program capacity. Mr. Cropper shared that eight growing and overcrowded schools were visited this summer and in 2020, I'm sorry, and in 2020, all schools were visited, and information from those visits was used in this study as well. All principals were interviewed about resources in each school. This part of the study determined the impact of resources on capacity. Pupil-teacher staffing ratios and space utilization standards for resources were part of the study. These standards were shared with all principals, instruction, student support services, and special instructional services, and edited based on their feedback. Mr. Cropper provided examples of space utilization. Mr. Goodwin reviewed the status of the Frederick County Middle School retaining wall. A purchase order was awarded to Pine Knoll Construction for the repairs, and a preconstruction meeting was held September 27th, 2023, and work has begun on this project. Mr. Kenny provided an update for the Indian Hollow School renovation project. Mr. Kenny shared work for the fifth grade wing is complete, and that, and that work has begun on the fourth grade wing. A completion date is expected by the end of November. Mr. Kenny provided an update for the Jameswood High School renovation project. He stated that work is progressing on the core areas of the building, and construction of the gym concourse addition has begun. Mr. Lee provided an update regarding the Omnitrex lease agreement renewal. He shared that our attorney has updated the lease terms, and the agreed-upon term is 10 years, and the lease amount will change from year to year beginning in year three. Omnitrex has agreed to the terms and has turned the lease agreement over to their attorney for review. The lease will be on a month-to-month basis until this new lease is executed. Mr. Goodwin provided information regarding a cafeteria improvement opportunity at Jameswood Middle School. There are funds received as reimbursements for meals. USDA requires us to limit fund balance to three months of operating expenses. The extra funds are required to be used in a spend-down plan. The cafeteria improvement plan at Jameswood Middle School provides us with an opportunity to use these funds on an improvement that meets the USDA's requirements. Mr. Goodwin shared that the current process for receiving meals is inefficient, and this plan would improve that process. If the board approves the plan, the cafeteria improvement opportunity will be submitted to the VDOE. A state number will be assigned for the project, and then FCPS can begin seeking bids. This project will not be considered a construction project with the exception of a wall removal to fit a refrigerator. Heard Mr. Lee review the components and plan of the cafeteria improvement opportunity. Mr. Goodwin reviewed the status of the Robert E. Ailer Middle School football field. He shared that installation of the field at Ailer occurred approximately three years ago, and that high temperatures and a lack of a watering system did not allow for adequate maturity of the turf. Frederick County Parks and Rec has recently regraded the site and is installing an irrigation system. Topsoil will be added, and the turf should mature as planned, and the field should be usable by spring. Mr. Goodwin shared information about the auditorium lighting at Shorando and Millbrook High Schools. Mr. Goodwin shared that the auditorium spaces are heavily used, and the lighting system in each of these spaces is in poor condition. This upgrade allows each school to move from analog to digital, digital platform. Jameswood High School's auditorium lighting upgrade was integrated with the school renovations. Quotes for the project are approximately $70,000 to $75,000 each. Mr. Goodwin provided information about a previous upgrade in 2020 for stage lighting and sound. Mr. Goodwin shared that the funding for this project will come from staff turnover funds. Dr. Hammer addressed the program capacity study and shared that the 10-year projection information has been received and can be reviewed, reviewed at a future date. Mr. Comstock suggested the full board review the information at the school, school board fall retreat. The meeting adjourned at 5:45 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on October 9th? We have a couple of action items coming out of committee. I'd recommend the full board approve the Jameswood Middle School Cafeteria Improvement Plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded that the full board approved the Jameswood Middle School Cafeteria Improvement Plan. Any discussion on this? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the full board approve the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on October 9th, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes from the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on October 9th, 2023. I'll just share, I would appreciate folks to go back through and watch. I think it was a healthy meeting where we had some conversations around specific topics, and very appreciative of staff for providing insights and answering questions of the committee, and looking forward to following up with some of those things. So appreciative of that. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have the Personnel Committee. Mr. Lake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personnel Committee meeting met here October 12th at 4:30. During the meeting, Mrs. Frakely reviewed the vacancy status of professional vacancies, teacher vacancies, support vacancies as of October 3rd, 2023. She also shared which positions have been filled this year as of October 3rd, 2023. Mrs. Frakely reviewed the new staff recognition process. There's four new categories, there's four categories, four new categories will be added in addition to the current two categories. The categories will be Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, Counselor of the Year, Teacher of the Year, First Year Teacher of the Year, and Service Personnel of the Year. There will be two recognition ceremonies at the end of the school year, one for professional staff, and one for support staff. Mrs. Halkowski reviewed the FCPS 101 program. She shared the program focus is community engagement and builds ambassadors for Frederick County Public Schools. She stated that the program is funded by donations from local businesses. The application window is now open until October 27th, 2023. The October session will be an alumni feedback session, and there will be six sessions for participants beginning in November and running through May. Dr. Hammer shared that the members of the school board and board of supervisors can attend the program at any time without going through the application process. Mrs. Frakely reviewed policies, reviewed changes to policy 542P Personnel Retirement, and by the way, Mr. Hester- Hester can tell you everything that you ever wanted to need to know about this. There was an amendment to the original red lines that will be provided at Tuesday's school board meeting, and they are there in our packet attached to this to clarify any of the content. Mrs. Frakely, and we will be going through those, by the way.
You will, I'm not.
Yeah. We'll do rock, paper, scissors, whatever. You had to be there. Mrs. Frakely reviewed changes to policy 539P Personnel Bus Drivers. Mrs. Frakely reviewed changes to policy 537 Personnel Suspension of Staff Members and policy 557 Personnel Administrative Leave. Let's see, Mr. Hester recommended students to be involved in the new awards process, and Dr. Hummer shared there will be a new award standard and recognition process at school board meetings, and we adjourned our meeting at 5:11. And additional details about the meeting are covered, are in the minutes. And if there are any questions before we go to our action items from the board members, I'll entertain them now.
Questions for Mr. Lake.
Okay, so let's go through these. There's four of them. Again, all four of the policies with their red lines are attached behind, and it was in the packet in preparation for the meeting tonight. So, first one. I recommend that the full board approve changes to policy 542P Personnel Retirement, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded that the full board approved changes to 542P Personnel in Retirement.
And may I ask Mr. Chairman for this couple of things here? Mrs. Frakely, you want to chime in about just what we're trying to do here?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Mrs. Frakely.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so 542P, we are going to add language that specifies what it means to be in the active process of retiring with VRS, just to make it clear and explicit as it relates to eligibility for continuation of group health insurance and payment of retirement supplements. So we define active process, and we're also including language that stipulates that retiring employees will be paid for each hour of unused and accumulated sick leave earned while employed at FCPS. So this has been our practice all along. We're just making it explicit in the policy that we're going to continue with what we're doing protocol-wise, but just make that crystal clear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake and Mrs. Frakely. You might also notice that there's a 542R, which is in there. Part of that conversation was around ensuring that the policy was in fact the policy and the regulation was in fact the regulation, and so that's just in there for reference for you as to what this change would then enact on the regulation side. So, we are looking at 542P and the proposed changes to that. There's a motion and a second, as I understand it, from Mr. Hester.
I have a question, but I think it's related to 542R, but it addresses something that Mrs. Frakely just said.
Okay, Mr. Comstock.
So the added language that references how they'll be paid for their unused sick leave where it states earned while employed at Frederick County Public Schools? And you said this doesn't change what we do now. Can you clarify that for me? Because sometimes teachers come to us with outside experience. How does that play into this?
So this is in reference to just bringing your sick leave. So if your division did not, typically sometimes divisions will either pay you out when you're leaving their division, and you can bring your sick leave with you, they'll pay you out, or you can bring your sick leave with you, up to a certain maximum, as defined in our policy. So if you choose to bring with you time, sick leave specifically, up to that max, then, and you hang on to that and you don't use it, it accumulates, and you can use it. But what we're saying and what we've been practicing is, the time that you have acquired while you've been employed with FCPS is what you'll be paid out upon your retirement in active process with VRS. So it's not the whole lot of it, and this is common in our neighboring divisions and throughout the Commonwealth. We're doing it. We just wanted to make it explicit in that. Does that answer your question? What can I clarify more for you?
No, no, it just seems a little, I don't know. I don't know. It's interesting. So what is the policy for, say, they come in with 100 sick days?
So it would be up to a maximum.
Correct. Right, but then if they acquire 10 a year, however many it is, and they use one, does that come off of what they brought in, or does that come off of the one that they were given for that year?
That's a good question. So it would, sorry, oh, did you want to? Sure.
Those are actually lumped together, but you keep those separate. So earning sick time is a benefit of the division that you serve. So each division may have a different number of days that you earn when you work there. And not every division actually takes days from other divisions. It's only by our decision that we accept that. So you would still have a pile of days you could use, but we would keep up with the days you earn as a Frederick County Public Schools employee, and those are the days you'd be paid for where you to leave. Or you could take those days with you to another division. Of course, we hope no one leaves.
Right.
It's an agreement you make as a division through policy, and how you take care of that. Like, a lot of divisions pay $10 to $15 a day for sick leave if you leave. Or you could hold on to those days because you could take them with you by agreement and then use them. You just won't get paid for those days because they were not earned here.
That makes sense. It makes perfect sense. I'm just wondering about clarifying, which of those days count as, you know, if they're using those days, so they start a new school year, they earn 10 more days and they use one, are they using one of the ones they just earned, or are they using one of the ones that they brought with them, in terms of how they would calculate what they're going to get paid out when they retire? If that makes sense?
It does make sense, and I'll defer back to Ms. Frakely if I can. That's an accounting procedure I think they have in place.
And I will defer to Ms. Camery.
And I'm just going to keep passing it down the line. So what they're paid for is what they earned with us. So it comes off of what they earned with us if they were to take a day of leave. Because what we're going to go back and look at is what did you transfer in? And then whatever that amount is gets set aside, and then we look at what you earned with us, and that's what we pay out.
They have to use what they've earned with us before they start tapping into what they brought with them.
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. I think the whole package is something we might want to look at in terms of just retention of teachers and that type of thing, and enticing them to stay, and giving them something to look forward to and a reason to hold on to those days as well. Just my thoughts on it. No problem with the policy. We can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Agree, I think we just sent out a perspective survey to staff, and it's my inclination that we might be taking a holistic look at all of these things, so appreciative of that. So, we've got a motion before us to approve changes to policy 542P Personnel Retirement. It's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, let's go on to the second one. And as we go through these, I think we'll do, we've always had like staff doing an executive summary in the past of policy, kind of what brought us to this, what are we doing? So, Mrs. Frakely, if you will, just a moment, let me make the motion first. Recommend to the full board approve changes to 539P Personnel Bus Drivers, and I do so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the changes to policy 539P.
Okay, Mrs. Frakely, please.
So here, we are working to incorporate drivers of any vehicle. So the original policy just references school bus drivers. Here, we're working to incorporate all drivers of vehicles transporting pupils, because we want to make sure that those standards are upheld for anybody driving our kids around. So we're going to add language to define what an aide is within the policy, a driver and safety-sensitive function. We also add language to apply to those operating a school bus and/or any other vehicle transporting pupils, to include non-commercial vehicles, so not just a bus, but any, really anything. And then we're also going to add language so that the policy not only impacts drivers, but that might be an aide in whatever vehicle is currently transporting those kids. So making sure that things like drug testing, et cetera, within that policy also apply to the folks that are there in an aide capacity as well.
All right, we have a motion before us that's been made and seconded. I'll just add, and I'll put it in the form of a question I asked during our committee meeting, but know the answer to it, but just want to share. One of the concerns that I had around this policy was the impact potentially on teachers who are taking field trips or those type of things, and so is it correct to say that this policy is directly impacting only those folks who are hired for the purpose of transportation or driving students?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Ms. Jordan clarified that for us at our Personnel Committee. Very thankful to have her here with us now in her role, but yes, that is the correct interpretation.
Perfect. All right. Any further questions or comments on this policy? We've got a motion before us to approve the changes to policy 539P. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Policy's approved. Mr. Lake.
Okay, our third policy is to recommend to the full board approve changes to policy 557P, a personnel policy on administrative leave, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded.
Mrs. Frakely.
Okay. So 557P, and it's broken down, we brought these to you in Personnel Committee as a comment together, but we'll break it down by 557P. We are moving to strike 557P because we're going to ultimately find that we've merged language from 557P into 537P for one policy, so just the front load of why we're asking you to strike that policy, so that you have that clear understanding. Just to give that to you as this motion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion being properly seconded to approve the changes, which is to dissolve policy 557P. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so the final policy that we'll be dealing with is to recommend to the full board approve changes to policy 537P Personnel Suspension of Staff Members, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been properly seconded to approve the changes to policy 537P Suspension of Staff Members.
Okay, so to piggyback off of what you all just approved, 557P and 537P had similar language in it around addressing administrative leave and how we're applying that. And so in an effort to streamline and hopefully cause a little less confusion in terms of interpretation and applying those policies, we moved to remove 557P, which is what you all just voted on, and then incorporate and streamline that into one policy, which is now 537P. So that is what you all are in this motion right now.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion second before us to accept the changes to policy 537P. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Comstock.
Sorry, just reading through it. The policy that we're getting rid of calls out the superintendent as having that authority to make that leave paid, but this amendment to the new policy, I don't see where it differentiates. It just says it may be paid or may be unpaid, but it doesn't really explicitly give the superintendent that same authority that the previous policy did. So, any insight into that?
Thank you, Mr. Comstock.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up. It would be through a recommendation, so we can certainly take that back to clarify if it's not clear, just because it would be from a recommendation through HR or a recommendation through a different director that would come through HR and then the way through, up through the chain. So if we need to make that explicitly clear, we can certainly do that.
So he eventually approves, but not necessarily makes the recommendation.
Dr. Hummer.
Dr. Hummer.
So we could, I don't think we need to, if, at the will of the board, I think we can add a section in there to this current policy. That would be my recommendation to add in that I can, because I do have the authority to authorize leave with pay, and I don't want to remove that because then we would have to bring it to you all to approve every time that happens. Now, of course, you all know when that happens. So, Mr. Comstock, that is a good catch. We need to make sure that we leave that in there. So if there's a section that we can add that in, because that's, and again, and that's, we said we were combining this, so why would we not add that into this one as well? Because I thought that was the initial intent, was to combine these two policies, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Dr. Angela.
Looking at Section 3 Administrative Leave pending investigation, it does indicate employees may be temporarily relieved of duties in place on administrative leave with pay at the discretion of the superintendent.
Okay, where is that one? I don't think we see that.
That's under Section 3.
Just as long as it's explicit in there. I want to make sure, as Mr. Comstock mentioned.
Under Section 3, very first.
Okay, so it is under Section 3. Yeah, I couldn't find that as well. Because I remember we said we combined it, and it was in there, so thank you, Mr. Comstock. Does that suffice?
I think so. Mr. Vice Chair. I'm just reading it now. I apologize for not reading it ahead of time. It's my fault. I just wanted to make sure everything's captured by the new policy.
Agreed.
Yep.
Just take a moment and look through. I do see that on the third page, but it was buried. I saw the "May" and recognized that that provides some latitude as well.
I think that does a good job of laying it out.
All right, so we have a motion before us that has been made and properly seconded to approve changes to policy 537P. Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of the changes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting held on October 12th, 2023. I do so move.
Motion's been made properly seconded to approve the, here we go, thank you, Mr. Hester.
No problem.
To approve the minutes related to the Personnel Committee meeting held on October the 12th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lake, or Mr., Dr. Hummer.
We apologize. A lot of similarities. I hope I put glasses on, right? 539, who seconded that motion?
That was Mrs. White.
Thank you, sir.
That did go a whole lot easier than at the committee meeting, so I want to thank you, Mr. Lake, for that eloquent, you know, way of doing that.
Not that he was counting.
It was 26.
And Mr. Lake later served as an official for a powder puff game at one of our high schools, and so we appreciate his service in that way, too. All right, wonderful. That brings us to the portion of our meeting reserved for board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. White.
Just wanted to say thank you to Mary Ann Shoelwater, and please forgive me for not speaking earlier. I think that that caught me off guard, and in the best kind of way. Your bravery is inspiring, and I think that it's easy to see how inspirational you are. She's the kind of person that lights up a room, and that was very evident by the testimonies from Gainsborough, Gainsborough, and all the employees. So, thank you so much, and I don't know if thank you is enough. We're blessed to have a person like you, and I'm sure that everybody in Gainsborough has the same amount of gratitude that we do.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Mr. Lake.
Well, I'd just like to tell Charlie we're thinking about him. And October is, you know, our recognition month, and everybody should make an effort to be in know, our recognition month, and everybody should make an effort to be involved as much as they can. And a lot of activities going on. There's, there's no shortage of entertainment, so everybody should get out there and enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Other comments from the board, are there any? All right, I'll just share, I know we talked about CTE earlier, and, and folks are probably excited for me to not be talking about it every meeting, but I, I will share that we have some phenomenal instruction that's going on within our current technical education programming, and I had the opportunity earlier to witness a new program that we've got, and that's our criminal justice program. And I know we've talked a lot about this, especially during the budget season, and yesterday. I just want to commend the partnership that Frederick County Sheriff's Office and then Dal J, under the leadership of Mr. Thompson, has for that program. We are blessed and thankful to have this ideation that's going on, not only in, in this program, but others happening at Dal J, and so witnessed kind of some new technology that our students will be able to engage in, and that was pretty exciting as an adult, and I can only imagine what that's gonna look like for our students who are going into that program. But every, everyone down from Sheriff Milholland to First Lieutenant Cornwell and Sergeant Mitchell and, and Deputy Thurgood and Deputy Ricketts, our students, I, I can only imagine the excitement that they'll have and the preparedness that they will also take from the classes that they're engaging in here at Frederick County Public Schools. For me, that's what it's all about, that, that, like I said, that classroom to workplace. Having gone through some of the new technology and experiencing some of that as an adult, I know that our students are going to be a step ahead of where other students are who are taking some of those same programs, and I know that's indicative of some of the, the work that's happening throughout our county, but just wanted to really highlight that partnership that we have. I'm thankful for the work that the sheriff and, and Frederick County Sheriff's Office has done to engage us in that way, and I appreciate that they're able to use this technology in their training as well. So if you haven't had an opportunity to see what that class and what that program is all about, I'm excited to see that the growth that it'll have, but also thankful for the ideation that you all have had of continually adding and investing in our community, because that's what it's all about, to provide students with opportunities that will allow them to be better prepared and have those workplace readiness skills, and so. It was super fun. Thanks for the invitation to engage in that, and, and you have earned another advocate, even more so than already was before, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion if there's no other comments from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been properly seconded, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I withstand adjourn.